will not be prohibited. The city council will take no action. So if you'd like to speak to the council about an item that is not on the agenda this evening, now would be your opportunity to be heard. You have a couple of options. You can state your name and I'll, and then I'll call upon you. Or in the app, there's a chat. A little icon up in the right corner. If you click on that and indicate your name, I can call on you through that either. Do we have anybody who'd like to address the council?
Yes. Hello?
Could you say your name?
My name's Catherine Lobear.
Okay, Catherine, we've got you. You have three minutes.
Okay, I live on South Main Street, across the street from the park where the, the old hospital was. And we have issues with all of the protesters. On, in particular, on Friday afternoons at rush hour, they're distracting the, um, the traffic that goes through here. And the street's pretty dangerous as it is. Um, people start not paying attention to their driving, they're honking, especially the truck drivers. That goes on, they'll lay on their horn for like 10 seconds. It's really noisy, it's creating a disturbance. And we live here, it went on one time for four hours. I was trying to garden and it was just constant banter. They yell, they scream, they run across the street back and forth. The police has had to be called. Um, and it's not one group, I don't know who they are. It's every, but every, in particular, Friday afternoons at rush hour, we're trying to find out if there's anything we can do to have the protesters move to a different location or at least put a damper on them um, at dangerous times because it gets, it's, it's bad right now, but it's going to get worse in the spring and summer. Um, the traffic is, is just horrendous down here. And um, we've had to call the police several times. And I don't like bothering them with this, but um, I, I asked them to keep an eye on the protesters because um, I don't want to argue with them. A lot of them are very aggressive and I just don't want to get into it. So I'm just wondering if there's anything that we can do at this point. It's been going on for years and, and it's wearing us down.
Okay, thank you for sharing your concerns. Unfortunately, since it's not an item on the agenda, we can't take action. Uh, we can however, uh, speak outside of council. Any council member can, uh, address the city manager and find out if, you know, the, the city has any role to play in maybe the safety. But other than that, um, we, we can't take any action, but we have heard this evening. So thank you.
Is there anything else that I can do?
City manager, do you have any other, any other comment? I don't, I don't believe there's anything more that you can do. You've come to council, you've made us aware of it. And if there is some action that should be taken, we can look into it. But uh, since it's not an agendized item, um, as, as it stated in the, the directions, the council can't take any action, we can just hear your concern. And we, we appreciate you taking the time to speak to us.
Madam Mayor, Chief Lozarraga wants to respond or provide comments.
Okay. Thank you.
Just, just a comment in response. Um, well, I'll take a look and see, um, times we've had enforcement actions. It hasn't really brought up for us as a, as a problem occasion other than the, the speeding and the pedestrian crossings, uh, those violations. Uh, but we can also, um, maybe trying to identify, uh, who the organizers are and just have a conversation, a discussion with them to, uh, you know, it is a public arena, it is a public place, uh, uh, and, and they are, you know, free to, to voice whatever their opinions are. Uh, however, in keeping with their safety as well as their ethic, um, we, we can have a discussion about that and, and the parameters that, that can exist. And, um, you know, we'll, we'll monitor it a, a little bit more closely, or at least to my satisfaction so that we can, uh, address any really pedestrian safety issues.
Thank you chief for commenting on that safety factor. And thank you caller. Do we have anybody else who would like to address the council? All right. I don't see anything on the chat as well. Having heard no additional comments, I'm going to move on to public matters. We have a public hearing, discussion and possible action approving a resolution to adopt an initial study mitigation, negative declaration and mitigation monitoring plan for the city of Willits groundwater resiliency improvement project and approve said project. The presenting staff member this evening will be the contract city engineer, um, Willburn. And I'd like to just quickly go over how we're going to go through this. Uh, Rod Willburn will give his presentation. City manager, Brian Bender, uh, may choose to add some additional comments or any, any other staff. Um, I'd like to see if council would entertain waiting on any questions or comments until after we hear from the public. So we'll open it up to the public again. You can click on the chat icon in the upper right corner and just give your name and we'll call upon you. Um, or I'll ask for names if you're a caller on the phone. Um, Vice Mayor Greta Connie is going to make sure, help me ensure that, uh, we don't miss anybody if you've entered your name before we move on. And then the last step will be, uh, council will have an opportunity to ask technical questions or propose ideas or, or share their thoughts. If that's all right with everybody? Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that, um, in, in past, um, you know, controversial items, I think it's, might be acceptable to, after the council members have expressed their questions or concerns, sometimes a member of the public will want to address something specific that came up that might not have come up when they were making their first comments. And I, I personally think that that is a nice, um, to have a little give and take so that the public really feels they can address a concern that may have come up after their initial public comments. So that's my thought. It may be shorter timeframe, you know, perhaps just a one minute or something.
Uh, that's, that's a valid statement. Um, would anybody entertain a, a second opportunity to speak limited to one minute? And a follow-up response so that we don't have this back and forth banter necessarily? More of the conversation where everybody has the opportunity to speak. Other council members, do you want to weigh in on Matt's idea?
I don't, I don't know if I'm going to be able to.
Okay, I, I saw Greta say, give me a nod, yes. I said, I, I'm good with Matt, so we're going to move forward with that plan. Thank you, Matt. All right, uh, so I'm going to turn it over to Rod Willburn, um, who is our contract city engineer. Thank you, Rod.
Thank you. Um, good evening, Honorable Mayor Rodriguez and esteemed council members. Um, we have a session to, to, uh, guide us through this presentation. I'll, Kathy, a minute to pull that up. Uh, I stated earlier, we're here to talk about...
I just want to jump in here quickly, Rod. Um, for the members of the public who are accessing this meeting through a phone call, this PowerPoint will be presented or posted on our website tomorrow. So following that up.
Thank you, Brian. Um, as Madam Mayor stated earlier, we're here to discuss the possible action proving the resolution to adopt, uh, the initial study and mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring plan uh, for the city of Willits groundwater resiliency improvement project and approve said project. This, uh, this project has been in the works for, for several years now. Kathy, could you please move to the next slide? This is an overlay of the, it doesn't seem to be coming through, right? Uh, the northern portion of the valley, uh, that outlines the groundwater, the groundwater system as it is now in the, the proposed project. You'll see the Elias, the Elias replacement well to the north. Um, and moving to the south, the water line that's proposed to be replaced. The Long 20 test well, which is being proposed as a monitoring well now and the groundwater treatment system. Next slide, please, Kathy. So to summarize the project, um, this, this phase of the project is an effort to move towards creating redundancy of the drinking water system and provide the city of Willits with a reliable secondary source that would be sufficient to meet community needs in case the surface water supply is compromised. It will, it's being proposed to supplement the city's drinking water as needed, provide some operational flexibility for the city, uh, to, to more effectively address the aquifer health, the watershed health, water quality, um, operational constraints and, and a myriad of other eco, ecosystem, uh, related elements of, really considered when, uh, we're dealing with the public water system. Um, and resiliency with, you know, with the effect of the city's water system, it's the ability to recover from or adjust easily to adversity or change. That was some, something that I, I was, I was curious and, and wanted to provide a clear definition of exactly what resiliency means in, in this respect. So, uh, next slide, please, Kathy. Um, so a little bit of project history. Two thousand and six, the city commissioned a planning study by West Yost, which, uh, which did a, and now analyzed the, the current, the city's surface water system and determined that during a critically dry year, the city would face a deficit if they relied only on surface water. And the study recommended, uh, development of up to three groundwater wells as a secondary source. It's nothing, nothing happened in response to that study. And in two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, we were faced with the drought emergency. Um, and the, as a result of that drought emergency, we, we were able to construct the groundwater treatment plant as it currently sits. Um, and the city reservoirs were at a danger, got to a dangerously low, uh, level with approximately or less than 90 days of water supply. And fortunately, it, it rained, it started raining in February and we were able to extend that and complete construction in fall of two fif- two thousand and fifteen. The total cost of the project was 2.2 million and a portion of that was, uh, was grant funded. Uh, in two thousand and seventeen, we constructed the Long 20 well. Um, the Long 20 well, which has been, was part of this project initially, has been removed from this project um, based on the concentration of arsenic in the raw water. And, um, it will be used as a monitoring well moving forward. And this discussion recent, of recent is with council's approval to have this be a, a, kind of a cash gym well and be part of the public domain for, uh, monitoring, uh, purposes so that more groundwater, uh, more groundwater data is available. So in two thousand and nineteen, uh, the city applied for this, uh, Irwin grant through, uh, the, the Integrated Regional Water Management Grant through the State Water Research Control Board and received 550,000 for part of the project to replace the 3,600 feet of existing water main that currently runs between the enhancement wetlands at the wastewater treatment facility north to the Elias replacement well. That pipe is old, six inch PVC, scheduled 40 PVC that was, uh, originally, uh, for irrigation purposes and was repurposed for a raw water transmission line from the Elias well. A new line was constructed between that point and the groundwater treatment plant in two thousand and thirteen, late two thousand and thirteen, early two thousand and fourteen. Um, next slide, please, Kathy. Uh, this is a little, uh, data, some data related to the current groundwater levels and looking back at the last five or six months. Um, we saw a noticeable, noticeable recovery, recharge from the rain events in, in late September and, and through October. Um, the Elias well, which is typically artesianine above, above ground, uh, was at a minimum, uh, level of 2.6 feet below the ground surface on September 22nd and recharged to 1.2 feet above the ground surface on November 3rd. Um, currently, uh, since we've had a dry spell here, uh, and based on the fact that for the last three months, the city has, this well has been used at a rate of 300 gallons per minute due to some mechanical issues at the surface water plant. It was drawn, it dropped, it drew down to about five and a half feet below the, the, the ground surface and has recovered to one, to 1.2 feet below ground surface or 4.3 feet over the last week, which I think is, is astounding. Um, the Long 20 well was, is roughly where its static level is throughout the year. Um, it was, it was showing some response, minor response potentially to the, um, to the, uh, to the pumping in the Elias well. Uh, but on January 17th, we would, we would have expected to see, see that same kind of recovery, probably not as fast in the Long 20 well. But, um, the transducer that's in that well stopped working on January 17th for some reason. Scott and Andrea went out to try to figure out what was wrong, but there was too much standing water still, um, in, on the surface and, uh, they weren't able to reach the well. So we saw similar recharge in the monitoring wells adjacent to the park well. Um, the shallow well is, was up to three feet below ground surface. Um, as, when it was drilled, it was nine feet down. So, um, this anecdotal real-time information shows recharge from essentially a month, a little over a month of, uh, we had some, we had some intense rainfall events, but, um, this type of information is what we, we continue to look for, continue to monitor and we base our decisions and recommendations on the real data that's available. So, next slide, please. So, uh, we're here tonight to talk about the initial study, the SECO document. Under the California Environmental Act, in this study, that's the analysis tool used to analyze, uh, the potential environmental impact and determine the appropriate environmental document. Um, that an initial site can lead to a mitigated negative declaration or an environmental impact report or a native declaration, I think is another option. Those are two, two that we need to consider, so what opposite ends of the spectrum. Uh, based on this analysis for this project, the groundwater resiliency project was determined, determined to be a mitigated negative declaration. Uh, next slide, please. So to go over the scope of the project, uh, in a little more detail, the grant-funded portion of the project is replacing the 3,600 feet of water main between the Elias well and the enhancement wetlands. Uh, the installation of, uh, the upgrade of the pump at the Elias well from 30 to 40 horsepower. The installation of a 250,000 gallon chlorine contact tank at the groundwater treatment plant, which will allow, the chlorine contact will give the, the chlorine some time for disinfection. It'll also give us an opportunity to control the pressure as to how much waters we are pushing into the system out of, of the chlorine contact tank. And that will be done, accomplished by a new pumping facility between the chlorine contact tank and the distribution system. So these are, uh, kind of, the original project description for the proposed grant included a 70 horsepower pump at the Elias well. But the addition of this well and a combination of, of factors allowed us to, to decrease that. We, we, we've upsized this pump a little bit to, uh, to make it possible to fill that tank a little faster, um, especially considering the removal of the, um, the Long 20 well from the project and the fact that the groundwater treatment plant originally as designed in 2013 was designed to accept raw water from three, three different well sources. Next slide, please. So the, the mitigation measures are related specifically to the installation of the 3,600 feet of new water main. Uh, the rest of the project, the, the construction of the chlorine contact tank and the, the new pumps between the chlorine contact tank and the distribution system, both take place on the, uh, the fill area, um, that's right next to the groundwater treatment plant previously constructed. Um, and the installation of the new pump would result in no changes to the physical environment. So these are, these are considerations that we went through, uh, when, uh, going through the preliminary design of the project. Um, and the, in order to mitigate the impacts of the new, of the new, um, water main installation, it will be completed using directional drilling, not open trench. So what that means is there will be, there will be open trenches, but smaller sections to avoid the baker's metal phone. And we're far enough away to, from the trees to, to, for root protection and to, to stay away from the birds. And, um, this, this is the, the least intrusive way for us to put that 3,600 feet of water main in. Next slide, please. So, um, the following slides are the categorical responses to public comments. Uh, there's no, SECO does not require the, uh, the city prepare individual responses to comments as part considering an initial study mitigating negative declaration. And, um, the three primary categories for, um, for which these comments have been provided, overdraft of the aquifer and groundwater monitoring, growth inducement, uh, and potential impacts to the Caltrans bypass mitigation project. Some of these are, when we look at outside of, outside of the, the primary scope of the project, um, and we'll get into some of the, the other considerations of this discussion. Groundwater monitoring, um, is important. It's something this, the city staff takes very seriously and we're constantly looking for, as I stated earlier, new sources of information, new data. Um, and all of that, which could help us make more informed decisions and provide better recommendations. Next, next slide, please.
What intentions? Got to cut it.
Uh, the first, the first category, overdrafting of the aquifer. Um, we've discussed this at length, uh, the past studies, um, estimating the, the groundwater capacity between 35,000 acre feet and 91,600 acre feet. Um, these are done at different times. Uh, these are, are decades old studies. But as was stated by, uh, and pointed out in one of our previous public meetings, the, the geology doesn't change very fast. Um, and, uh, the other thing to look at is that the sheer storage volume is far greater than the surface water storage historical consumption of the, of the city. So regulatory, regulatory consideration, state water resource control board considers Little Lake Valley to be very low priority. The agenda summary goes into this and more detail.
I got a, a text message from Robert Parmiter.
Excuse me, whoever the individual is.
That thing that Kerry Shattuck was talking about, about Dr. Corin putting in that there are...
Hashtag?
Camp.
Your, your, hashtag, your microphone is live.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Please mute yourself, thank you.
Wow, that's our supervisor, cool.
Um, and, uh, as referenced earlier, the groundwater management plan that was adopted by the city in 2020 is, is a baseline document and it's an important, provides the foundation for additional groundwater monitoring, groundwater management. And what is really critical is the participation by, uh, the stakeholders, including the county of Mendocino. Given the number of wells outside of the city limits, outside of the city's extrajurisdictional property, um, the city has a few data points. And, um, the, what's outside of the city are far, is far more, far more wells with far more information. And, um, that would be critical to making the groundwater management plan a more effective tool for, for the city, for the basin, for everybody that resides in Little Lake Valley. Um, and as stated earlier, the city, we, as we looked at in a, in one of the previous slides, we're continually monitoring, uh, the water levels, the groundwater levels in four wells at this time. So, next slide, please. So the, the two others, growth inducement and, uh, potential impacts to the Caltrans mitigation wetlands. Um, and, uh, as I stated on the last slide and, and throughout this, there's a, there's a more lengthy explanation, um, in, in the agenda summary report, report. So I, um, encourage everybody to, to consult that document as well. Um, the cities, the cities, let's start with growth inducement. The cities can, the allowable connections by the state. The state of California says you, you can support, this is your capacity. That capacity is based on the storage tanks within the system, the amount of storage. And the, what we looked at the last time we did this calculation um, in source capacity study, I believe it was 2015, uh, the, the supply of the surface water, surface water groundwater, what we consider with, related to those, the, the supplier or the source is, does the city have enough water to fill the storage tanks? And based on some, some peak demand, et cetera. And we determine, yes, the city has enough water to fill the storage tanks. But the number of connections can't exceed that storage, that available storage. So the number of connections is, was established. I don't, I don't know it off the top of my head, but this project, based on that calculation, does not affect that number. There, there's no, there's no like, okay, it's a 40 gallon per minute pump. That would not figure into this equation. Uh, the other factors, uh, to consider, uh, land use, where, 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 what, what is actually developable right now? And I believe one thing that Dusty duly pointed out was growth is a factor considered in the in the in the the general plan E I R. So therefore, we we this was not considered based on this this analysis, a growth inducing project. And the potential impacts to Caltrans mitigation wetlands. In two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, Tom Mannett, the city engineer, prepared a report and had extensive back and forth discussion with California Department of Fish and Wildlife and established there's no hydraulic connectivity between the Elias well, which pulls off a confined aquifer and outlet creek or surface water, which is why we've seen a lot of documents that the the this confined aquifer that the Elias well draws on is not going to impact shallow wells because it's a different, it's they're relying on different water. So therefore, no impacts under CEQA, no significant impacts under CEQA related to Caltrans mitigation wetlands that are caused by this project. And another very important aspect of this is since we've, the city's been in communication with Mendocino County Resource Conservation District to to coordinate and coordinate data collection, monitoring efforts and since since the mitigation wetlands and the wells that are currently on the Caltrans property are the the closest neighbors, a very, very, very critical and important piece of information that that we we would rely on and and welcome. I just think it's an important, it's an important consideration, it's an important part of looking at potential impacts and and having a better understanding of the relationship between between the wells and the and the north end of the valley. Next slide, please. And this is, this is the final slide. This is something that has come up recently and we've talked about this. I think this is the the usage has been discussed since we the since we started the groundwater management plan, public hearings, stakeholder meetings back in early two thousand and twelve. So extensive discussions with with Brian Bender, Scott Herman, and Andrea Trincato, we came up with this outline of an operational use plan that gives an outline, restrictive, these are the uses that the groundwater treatment plant would be used under these following circumstances. First, obviously, in case of an emergency. And in an emergency situation, it would be that the city's council discretion, this is this is the rough framework. What it what would be considered an emergency? So that would be the first circumstance. Maintenance is another circumstance that we've experienced recently. Clarifier, as I alluded to earlier, clarifier at the surface water treatment plant was down, a weld was broken. It wasn't, it wasn't, it was it was something you couldn't see from the surface. It was internal, but the surface water plant wasn't working properly. And so in order to fix this, it took took quite some time to get to to take it offline, fix it and get it back online. That's why the groundwater plant was running for the last three months. To offset that diminished diminished capacity or the reduced production at the surface water treatment plant. And there are other instances, we recently in the last four years had to take the three million gallon tank offline so it could be cleaned and repainted. And there, these are just examples of when the operators would have to make a decision, a real time decision when to turn on groundwater treatment plant to supplement the surface water. So that the city could would would not experience an interruption in flow and there wouldn't be any issue related to storage. The third circumstance would be just a regular, whether it be weekly or biweekly, short term operation, say eight hours for for one day every couple of weeks to ensure that the groundwater treatment plant is operating, will continue to operate, will be operational should an emergency or other other circumstance arrive where it's needed. And finally, flushing. That's something that has become a noticeable issue lately with brown water. This is an annual maintenance activity that is very it's 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 a difficult, we're near in a drought situation to to dump twenty million gallons of water down the gutter when everybody's trying to hit with conservation measures. I know back in two thousand and fourteen, twenty fifteen, it was very difficult. And I know we we only did a partial flushing. So if you don't flush the system, sediment builds up and any minor disturbance or change in velocity creates brown water and it's it's while it's cosmetic, it, you know, it stains your sheets. It's a nuisance. It's not what people want to have coming out of their taps. So this is, as I said, an outline would need to be flushed out. And and given a little more context and a little more description. And what we would propose is to do so and expand and bring it back to city council for consideration and ideally approval with with input in in the coming weeks. So with that, that is that is, that is the end of the the slides, that is the end of the presentation. Look forward to questions and discussion. Very important topic. Thank you.
I just want to add this following Rod's power of the presentation. We also have in the audience here Andrew Ramos, who is an attorney who specializes in water development at the municipal level. He's been working with staff for the last several months in helping us navigate through the oh, the approval process and how to present this in the best light for the council to understand. So as you can see, Andrew is available. He will also answer any question that the council and the public have. So I noted that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move to the public portion, I just want to let callers know that I see that we have nine callers that do not have their phone lines muted. I know sometimes you think you're quiet, but we can hear you and I want to make sure that we respect each individual that speaks during the public comment. So if you're on the phone, could you please mute your mic and until you're called upon? If you are joining us via teleconference and you can see the screen, go up to the chat button, type in your name so that we know that you're waiting to speak. Right now, if you would like to announce yourself, hopefully not all at once, we'll write down the names of the individual callers who would like to speak that are on the telephone. So open that up.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know what is required to announce myself, but I think I'm unmuted and on the phone. Ellen Drell, my name.
Thank you, Ellen. Do we have any other caller? John Alameda, I see that you've also requested. Do we have anybody else who would like to speak on this topic or public express? All right, you changed your mind, go ahead. Do you have a question?
I just wanted to say that this is Rosamund Crowder and I would like to speak at some point. So call on me, I'm on the phone.
Thank you, Rosamund. I'll call on you. Okay, I'll come back and give another opportunity should anybody else want to before we finish public input. The first person we'll hear from will be John Alameda. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Rodriguez and council members and staff. I wanted to share my concerns. I know that I've shared them in a letter and I've sent in a report from the state of California. Thomas Elias reports on state matters and the over pumping of the the aquas over in the Sacramento San King Valleys. First of all, we live in a shared aquifer. No one person in this Willets Valley owns this aquifer. It's a shared aquifer that everybody depends on, especially the people in the valley. We don't have any other way. We don't have reservoirs. If our wells go dry or if they're contaminated by over pumping of any kind of chemicals and we know we have some contaminants in this valley, then we're going to suffer and probably not have any water. So first of all, I want to ask, in your last document you just brought up, that you put some restrictions on yourself on how you want to use this, and I'm asking that you do that also. I put it in my letter. You put in direction in your documents that you would not use this outside of emergency uses until your reservoirs get down to twenty five percent. And in conjunction, you know, on dry years with water rationing. And then I also understand that you need to run it once in a while, like possibly twenty, thirty minutes twice a week to make sure the equipment's in good shape. So if you're ready for these emergencies, I do I also noted that in your last project, you have increased your size of pipe from eight inch to ten inch, which originally came from six inch to eight inch for two wells. Now you're using a ten inch. Concerns me much because I be I believe that that could lead to over pumping. You're also, your studies in the past from sixty five and nineteen eighty six, one is approximately sixty years old, the other one's approximately eighty years old. You live in a different world now. They're outdated. That was sixty five, January sixty five, right next to December of sixty four, which was the great flood of nineteen sixty four. I lived through it. I know what it was like. We don't have weather like that anymore. And eighty six, big, big rain year. Seems like you picked the two heaviest years because that was more water than but I know because I had to do my permits for my home and I was in a wet area, so I had to do special studies. Also, these valley residents, well, I want to go to this. You have three wells. Two of them are contaminated. The one contaminated one at the park is about a mile probably, I'm estimating, from the one that's contaminated, the long twenty well. Then approximately, what is it, another thousand feet is your good well. If you over pump that well, you could bring contaminants in from the long twenty well. So we know a great portion of this valley is contaminated and we're concerned about the contamination also. If you read the article that I gave you from the reports to Sacramento Valley, that's what's happening, you know, where either wells are going dry or contaminants reinvolved in it, which was previously good wells. That's what we're concerned with also. But basically, the people in this valley, a lot of them are old timers, been here a long time. I know the first house I was brought to when I was born was here in Willets, been here all my life, worked here all my life. And I want to stay here and I don't want my well contaminated and I don't want it to go dry. I'm not so sure what you consider a shallow well. Definition in the past, when I had done wells, anything shallower than thirty feet, shallow well. Mine's over thirty feet. It's a lot, about twice that. So I don't know that it's considered a shallow well, so I don't know that it's can be considered that nothing would happen from over pumping the Elias well. So chemical contamination and over pumping is a great concern to people in this valley and should be to anybody that uses this water. The contaminants from pumping it too hard should be a real concern, being these two other wells are contaminated, are far apart. But one of them's close to the Elias well. Thank you for this time. I appreciate letting me speak.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Ellen Drell.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Rodriguez and city council members. My name is Ellen Drell and I have served for many years on the board of the Willets Environmental Center. I and probably most other people agree that this new groundwater well project is an opportunity to secure an emergency backup water supply for the city of Willets and its current water customers. I was interested to hear about the operational use plan that that is working to define emergency and talks about providing, using using this new water source for maintenance during, when the when the reservoir system is down and the the biweekly, possibly short term operation, just to make sure that the well is ready and also to use it for flushing the delivery system of the city's water system. I mean, I think we probably all agree that those are perfectly acceptable and advantageous attributes of this new well and and I don't think anybody would stand in the way of a new water source to to provide for those assurances. And and of course, water security in periods of long drought. Defining an emergency is really important. That language, I believe, needs to be in the initial study and mitigated negative declaration. As it stands now, the 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 initial study and mitigated neg deck leave the use of the Elias well wide open for, and that creates a potential for overuse and abuse of the groundwater resource. And though this council may not want to to double or triple the size of Willets or or the area of Willets and may not want to get into the business of selling water to whoever might want it in whatever quantity, councils change. This full bill is now in a very important position to proceed with in with measured steps to provide Willets with a reliable backup system, but avoid the pitfall of setting the stage for a reckless water grab. I think that the language that looks like it's being written into the operational use plan needs to be written into the initial study. And the specific quantified monitoring plan with thresholds, with real thresholds based on the most current data available, not thirty six year old studies from the wettest years in the last century, need to be part of the mitigation, the mitigation, the mitigation plan. I just want to note too, and and I, I'm not sure, I mean, maybe the attorney that the city has retained, can they help the city council figure out how to get that language into the I S and mitigated neg deck so that that document really reflects what the city wants to do? That that would be great. I don't have those answers, but this attorney might. One thing I, an addition that I want to mention is that we have have looked at the consultant's response to the environmental center's concern about growth inducement and and it still seems to us that 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 not dealing, actually, a groundwater basin is in effect storage capacity. So I, it's our position still that capacity, by not dealing with the growth inducement properties, the growth inducement properties of this new well with this water source is in its essence, and to say it's CEQA CEQA says that it's it's a matter of storage capacity, not not amount of water availability, is in essence pushing that question down the road and it constitutes piecemealing a project, which is a tactic, which and it constitutes piecemealing a project, which is a tactic, which is for sure a violation of SEQA. Lastly, I just want to say, are my three minutes up?
I gave you about four, you could just wrap it up, thank you.
Yes, okay, I just want to wrap it up by saying, although the state considers Little Lake Valley a low priority water basin, obviously it's of the highest priority for us who live here. And it may very well be our lifeline in the years ahead and it deserves our most, our utmost care.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Rosamund Crowder.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, wonderful, I'd like to thank Mayor Rodriguez and the city council for this opportunity to speak. And I echo what Ellen has said. I live outside the city, but I consider Willets my hometown and I'm also a board member on the Willets Environmental Center. And a few things I'd like to add, I was a little disturbed earlier to hear that when the Elias well was being pumped at 300 gallons per minute recently, that the long 20 well showed some response, which kind of makes me feel like there's water moving from one to the other, which I did read in several different places that the Elias does have negligible amounts of arsenic. And I think that having a regular testing of the Elias well to see if it actually does have arsenic and how much is a really important thing to include in a monitoring plan. And I also, that the outdated studies, I agree that the geology has not changed, but what is likely to have changed is the recharge rate and the amount of water use in the valley. Certainly, a lot has changed uphill, upstream, there are many tons up in the hills that didn't used to be there. And a lot of water is being taken out up in the hills, a lot more than used to be. And who knows how much more is being taken out of wells in the valley. And certainly the park well is being used way more than it used to be used. And also the mitigation lands, 7.7 acre feet a year is being taken out to keep those plants alive. And so I think those are all things that have changed and not to mention even climate change. But so I think it's very important to have an operational use plan. I really, I had not heard that term used before, but I agree that it needs to be part of the document. And I realize that right now that there is a 40 gallon per minute. I guess the 30 gallon a minute well was changed to a 40 gallon a minute. But the document says 70 gallons a minute, which means that it could easily be changed to a 70 gallon a minute without looking at the environmental results of that. Going back to look at that, because it's in the document as 70 gallons a minute, which is really big. And as far as the capacity of the water system, it seems to me that the amount of water that the treatment plant can process, I don't know what that is. It doesn't say it anywhere in the documents, but that is the true capacity. And that's how much water can actually be delivered, not necessarily the size of the tank. No matter what the technicalities are of how many connections are allowed, the actual ability to pass that much clean water through, whether it's going to connections or it's being sold to other cities, you know, Redwood Valley, Fort Bragg, Mendocino. I think the cities come under quite a bit of pressure to sell water. And so those are my concerns and I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. All right, are there any other, any other callers at this time that would like to address this council on this matter? All right, anybody in the teleconference that's on the screen that would like to address this council on this matter? Okay. All right, at this time, we'll bring it back up to city council and to ask any technical questions based on the presentation. And then after that, I'll open it back up to the public for one minute, should there be any reflective comments. And then we'll accept any proposals to move forward. Would any council member like to speak first, asking a technical question?
Yes, this is Larry.
Go ahead Larry and then Matt.
I would like to know if anybody that has kept this, has ever known how much water that is being taken out of the valley now that wasn't taken out of the valley, let's say five years ago. And I have never been able to find out how much the county has allowed wells, how many wells is out there and how many, how much water is being taken from the valley by people that have put in the wells just in the last couple, two or three years. That's my question to anybody, Ellen or anybody else that would have that information. Thank you.
Okay, council member Strong.
I would agree with that question. Data exists and I hear that the county is taking a baby step, and I think it is only a baby step, towards some controls over at least new wells to track that kind of data. And it really is the county's responsibility, these are not in the city limits, so, but I would agree with that. And if there is some data on it, I would love to know it. I also had a couple of questions. One, I would agree with, I think, what both Ellen and Rosamund said about the common sense, as a layman in any way, of the water capacity being what we can draw down from the reservoirs added to whatever we have capacity for at the groundwater treatment plant. And so that would be, you know, the limits of the pump, the pipes, the plant itself, and then the holding tank. But to say that the only thing that counts as growth inducing is a holding tank, not including the clear water, you know, contact, holding tank, seems just completely counterintuitive. So it does seem to me, regardless of what the regulatory structure says, that the capacity that we're building into the groundwater system with this project is potentially growth inducing. It does, you know, and I think, personally, I think the city does want to grow a little, but I certainly don't want to double our size and I certainly want to do it in a very deliberate and controlled way. So I kind of agree with those comments that were made. That's not really a question, I guess. I did notice, and by the way, thank you Rod and staff for coming up with the initial ideas for a for the use guidelines for how the water would get used. And I think that's a big step in the right direction and I would also think that should be part of the environmental documentation because it is critical to the decision that we need to make. But the other question I had was, when the city was using the groundwater system at roughly 300 gallons per minute for a period of about three months, I would really love to get a little bit more specific about how that affected any surface changes, like how deep is the surface water going during that extended period of pumping? And certainly if there was an impact on the monitoring well at the long 20, kind of, you know, using that, it's only, it's only one experiment basically, but those are questions that I have about the long-term impact of using the groundwater system without adequate oversight and controls on it. And I didn't quite, you know, anyway, that was a concern. And the surface water, you know, if the surface water level responds to a lot of pumping, that is going to affect the creeks as well as the wetlands, as well as shallow wells, obviously, for, you know, some of the residents that are potentially within that cone of influence. So anyway, those were things, I just wanted to make sure that I, as a layperson, have as much understanding as I can get, thank you.
So city manager Brian Bender, would somebody be able to comment then on, did the long 20 well show response when Elias was pumping?
Yes, Scott Herman can explain that, but I also want to take the opportunity real quickly and there is no attempt to conceal or, you know, play a shell game with the council or the public. You know, we had to think on our feet this afternoon, staff, regarding a management plan. We were, I was having some dialogue with council members and they were expressing concerns about how can this be managed? It's a new resource that the city would potentially be utilizing. And I think there is merit to have some documentation, so that's why it was, we don't have it fleshed out, we don't have it refined to the point where we can, you know, address it, you know, the full concerns. But I think Rod's PowerPoint has the key cornerstone elements that we would like to see in that document, so that's why it's there. We can address it in context, but we wanted to throw that out there as a a response to some of the concerns we had from the council. And I think it does do that, so, you know, if there's questions on that and the origins, yes, that's why it came relatively late in this process, but, you know, like I said, we're thinking on our feet. We're trying to respond to council concerns and public concerns, so that's what that's there for. But I will turn it over to Scott or Rod, they have the knowledge on what's happening with the well activity and the aquifer from the recent pumping activity.
Can I respond to a couple of comments that have been made? Or is that going to come out?
Who's speaking? Who's speaking?
This is Rod. Rod Wilburn.
Okay, Rod, yeah, go ahead if you could respond to questions from council, please.
There was a very slight reaction, we looked at it today, we don't have enough data to really speak on it. To fully, Scott, Scott looked at it too, Scott probably has a little more insight, but I would want to stress, there was a couple of things. The well, this isn't a new well, this is an existing well that's currently permitted by the state to, at 600 gallons a minute, it's not, it's not a new introduction to the groundwater system. And I think there's no mention of a 70 horsepower motor in the initial study itself. Just wanted to clarify that, so just to get that squared away. Scott, do you have, you looked at the data too, we've discussed it briefly. Do you have anything on that? I don't know if we looked at the same thing, so I just want to be sure that we were looking at the same monitoring data.
Yeah, we were.
But if I could interject real quick, I think that that reference to the 40 and the 70 is a typo. Is that correct, city manager Bender?
The current documents relate directly to a 40. We did a quick search right now, and I praised the efforts of Andrea there. There's no references to a 70 in the actual document, so, you know, what is on the table for a project component is upsizing from 30 to 40 horsepower.
Thank you, go ahead Scott.
Go ahead, sorry.
No, go ahead Rod.
I know, I'm I'll turn it over to you.
Looking at the graph currently on our Trimble website, when that well on the fourth or fifth of November started up, the long 20 well was a negative 4.2 feet, 4.3 feet, sorry. And when that well came on, it dropped it down three tenths of a foot. And then popped back up to one tenth below ground, so. And then there was fluctuations throughout the three months that we did use it. And that's what I'm seeing on here. And it goes from anywhere to 4.7 to 3.3 feet below ground.
Can I ask a little further, is that, does that go like 24 hours a day, the monitoring? Or is it just moments in time? And to remember that that was also when we got a lot of rain, starting in that time. But, so I'm wondering if, does it, how constant is that monitoring?
Yeah, it's 24/7. I don't know how far we can break it down, I haven't looked into it that much, if it's minutes. Do you recall Rod, I don't know if
Every 15 minutes, every 15 minutes it reports, it gives a value. And what we saw was considerable recharge and little to no response to the 300 gallons per minute charge or pumping. That would be how I would characterize it. And I would also point out that the amount of rainfall doesn't affect the capacity, it just affects the recharge. So if the capacity of the basin is 50,000 acre feet, how much it rains in a given year just means that it's going to either recharge or it's not. The past studies showed that 75% of annual rainfall would fully recharge the aquifer. The most recent rainfall showed that the groundwater reacted very quickly to a month of intense rainfall, but not near, not near our average rainfall year. And the long 20 well got basically back to its static level from previous. And I believe that's about four feet below ground surface, right Scott?
Correct, yes, it's static level, right.
Right, so in a standard year, we were from, for us, it confirmed our position and added supporting documentation to our recommendations. So what we look for is, and we've been looking for throughout, is for some tangible factual representation of the concern, you know, something that we can rely on and quantify, which we haven't been able to do. So over, like a comment that reflects an unforeseen, like what if an unforeseen circumstance comes up? What if something you didn't expect happens? How do we quantify that and analyze it? How do you predict? There are so many hypotheticals that we could run through, that it would be an endless process. So with respect to analysis, it has to be quantifiable. There's, we have not, we have yet to see something that tells us that our interpretation, our representation of what we feel we feel is a abundant water supply under the surface, under the ground surface is not correct.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, this is Andrew Ramos, Council for the city. I'd like to address some of council's comments at the appropriate time.
Now would be inappropriate time. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, council. I'm Andrew Ramos. I'm an attorney with BKS in Sacramento. I'm legal counsel for the city on water and Sequoia issues. I've actually been working with you for about five years now on water issues. But I think this is the first time I've been to a council meeting. So it's nice to meet all of you. There's two comments that I heard that I'd like to address. The first was whether the operational use plan that's been scheduled out by city staff tonight needs to be part of the environmental study before you move forward with it. And and also some questions about growth inducement. So the first question, whether the operational use plan needs to be part of the environmental study. Like any good attorney, I'll answer that question by talking about something else entirely. And the thing I'll talk to you about is, what are you being asked to do tonight? It's two things. And this is the context for for understanding how to approach the operational use plan. The two things you're being asked to do tonight are to consider adoption of the ISMND, the Initial Study in Mitigated Negdeck, your environmental document, and the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting plan that goes along with it. That's the first action that you're considering. The second and related action is what to do about the actual project, meaning the project is described by Mr. Wilburn. These are two separate but related actions. And that is key for understanding how to approach your operational use plan. So you have a couple of options tonight that I think you should consider. Option one, as I consider it, is adopt the ISMND and the MMRP, the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting plan, and approve the project as proposed. So again, that's, that's just option one. Two is adopt your environmental document, your ISMND and MMRP, and approve the project with conditions. That, that option is probably not viable tonight because, as you've heard, staff have taken a shot, it's catching out some of the potential conditions for approval of the project. But those have not been fully fleshed out at this point, and they probably need to be brought back to council at a future date for approval. Third option is to approve the environmental document and leave the project approval to another meeting when the conditions have been further developed and they can be considered by council, and you can get some additional feedback. And the reason I highlight that one is because it highlights the two separate actions. Again, approval of the environmental document and approval of the project in some form, or consideration of the project in some form with or without conditions. And the reason that's important, and this is where I swing back around to the actual question that was asked, is there's two different functions of what you're being asked to do. The environmental document, its function is to analyze the maximal impact of the proposed project, the maximum impact that it can have, and to query whether there is any potential significant environmental impact with the maximum project, which in this case was analyzed as, and I, and I think this was important to, to understanding the context for some of the comments, is if the city were to switch over entirely to groundwater use, which is not proposed as part of the project, but that was just for the environmental study to understand the maximum impact. So again, the function of your environmental document is not to describe necessarily the project that you were going to approve, but to analyze its maximum impacts. So it's not appropriate to move forward with an environmental document that represents a scaled down or conditioned project, because that's, again, not the function of your environmental document. Your environmental document is supposed to look at the maximum potential impact, and to ensure that there are no potential impacts as a result of that maximum, but somewhat hypothetical project. So that's issue number one that you're considered, you're considering is adoption of that environmental document. But the second part is really what I think has been the focus of the discussion tonight. And that is, what are the potential conditions on this project moving forward if you consider adoption of it? And that's the part where it's certainly appropriate for council to weigh in, take public comment, and consider adoption of reasonable conditions on the use of the project. And frankly, I've, I've read the, the comment letters that you've received on the two revisions to this project. And most of those comments really go to what are the appropriate conditions on the project? Some are addressed to environmental issues, including the growth inducement that I'll talk about in a moment. But really, they're, they're aimed at how do we ensure that the city uses this project appropriately, you know, to be the second source of supply? And what are the potential conditions that should be put on it? And that's an effort that staff have gone a long way towards putting together, but are still considering. But again, those conditions are part of your potential project approval. They're not part of your environmental document considers your maximum impacts. But you're certainly able to condition the project and to put some, some boundaries on its use without having to go back and redo your environmental document. And this environmental document has been through quite a few stages already. You all know this, but, you know, this project has been marked by some significant changes in your environmental document along the way in response to, you know, an ongoing dialogue with the public, including the removal of the Long 20 in response to comments, and, and the revisions that further studied the potential impacts to groundwater, but again, concluded that there would be no potential impacts. So my point to you is, you don't need to go back and redo your environmental study because it served its function. It's confirmed that there are no potential environmental impacts, but you can place guide, guidepost for the project and conditions on it as part of your project approval. My second point is on the growth inducement question. This is, this is a tough one, because the way Sequoia approaches growth inducement is to ask whether the project would remove a significant constriction on growth. So when we look at constrictions, we're not looking at, does it make growth more possible necessarily, but does it remove that significant impeding factor? And in this case, for the city, the significant impeding factor is not just capacity in your water system, but its capacity in your treatment system. So it's the capacity to actually treat water, not necessarily to store it or distribute it. I'm sorry, distribute it, but not to store it or supply it, rather, that is your constricting factor. That is what we look at for sequel purposes for growth inducement. Because of this project is not a treatment project, it does not remove any constrictions regarding treatment, it is legally not a growth inducing project. And that's the reason that we responded as such in your staff analysis. So with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions as we go along. This is a complicated project. But, you know, I do applaud the city for, for moving forward and looking at a second source of supply. I have clients throughout the state, including in the Sacramento Valley, which Mr. Almeida was referencing earlier, that only wish they had a potential second supply for, you know, the unknown future. So I applaud you for taking a hard look at this and responding to public comment appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll call in just a second. And I just want to reiterate what City Manager Brian Bender said about the operational use plan, and confirm that, that the reason that has come forward is because we have had significant community input. And this was a thought to try and address those concerns. I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Credit Connie.
Thank you. Mr. Ramos, I just wanted maybe some clarification on something you said a few minutes ago. You talked about the role of the environmental document and how that looked at the maximum impact that this project could have. And you tried to assure us that we don't need to redo that document, that that document has done its job. I guess one of the questions that keeps coming up, though, and maybe you can help shine some light on this, is how can we feel confident that that document has in fact done its job to reassure us that there will be no significant impact when the, one of the base, I mean, the two base studies used for the environmental document are, everyone agrees, very, very old, and taken at a time of extreme rainfall. So I guess that, to me, that kind of, I just haven't been able to wrap my head fully around how we can feel secure in this environmental report when the data we have that we're basing it on is not real fresh. Can you give me any clarification there?
Yeah, I'm happy to address that. And this is a question that comes up throughout the state because many of the geological studies on which groundwater sustainability agencies, which is not in play here, but is in play throughout the state with the advent of the Sigma, the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, are wrestling with, that decisions throughout the state about groundwater use have to be based on some older studies. But the reason that those older studies are still a valid basis for your environmental analysis is they move in geological time. And, and geological time moves very, very slowly. So even an analysis that is 40 to 60 years old does not necessarily become invalid through passage of time, because your geology is not changing over that time, at least not significantly. It's moving in hundreds of thousands, if not millions of years, rather than in decades. But the additional assurance that you have, Council Member Connie, is that conditions are also being looked at in the ISMND over recent time periods. So those older studies that you're referencing are really looking at the storage capacity in the basin. But we have another check on the health of the groundwater basin, and that's groundwater levels, which have been shown repeatedly to be both high, but also to recharge seasonally, including after the extensive drought that the state has been going through. I made this comment to city staff earlier that, you know, the groundwater levels in your monitoring wells have rebounded significantly over the last year, which is amazing to me. I have clients in other areas of the state where their groundwater levels are at the lowest they've literally ever been, including in the 70s during the extensive drought there. So you have that second check on the health of the basin that informs you and shows you that even with this additional pumping, you have a significant healthy basin under you that is both a reasonable source for your supply. But, you know, you, through these potential conditions and potential future monitoring, you can ensure continues to be a healthy supply.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yeah, I thank you, Andrew. First of all, I appreciate, I was going to ask you that question earlier regarding options we have, as I was wondering about that. So thank you there. That was one question I had. The other one is, I guess more to staff. If we did, in the future, did build more tanks, with the idea that not so much for retaining groundwater, but to capture more of our surface water. Is that something that affects this in some form or another now? Or is that something we can continue? I don't necessarily see it as, obviously, for technical reasons, to gross inducer, growth inducer, but I also look at it as future planning. And it seems like we have to look at all the cards on the table, but can't just look at one thing, cities. So I guess that's more of a question for staff. Is that something we can continue to look at? I don't know for today. Kind of feel like, bring back those other conditions at a later date, staff is working on.
Rod, do you have a response?
Sorry, I'm having a little connection issue. I thought I had reliable internet. So that's why I giggle. We, Brian and I talked about this earlier. What was the question again, Jerry? I'm sorry, I didn't catch the, I caught part of it.
Sorry, I just want to know, can we continue to look at storage capacity in the future separate from this? Is this, or does that also kind of get rounded into this? Because I kind of see spending our storage for surface water has been something we brought up in the past. I think it's brought up, been brought up by the public. Why don't we look at that? But I kind of see that as kind of a different issue. But that isn't, is that something we would continue to look at?
It sounds like that's an, an issue that's separate from the, the potential for an adoption of the environmental document.
That was looked at previously. There was an
Councilmember Gonzalez, are you, are you asking that that be a future agenda item? Or is it something that you would like to see tied to the potential operational use plan? Just so we understand where it's coming from.
I wasn't trying to tie it to it. I just was asking a question to staff.
I don't, I don't know what the process would be off the top of my head. I would expect it to be cumbersome and, and time consuming and have, I, I don't want to get guessed at the chance of success, but I know impoundments are, are being discouraged and, and removed, or, or slated for removal recently. So I'd have to go back and look at the, the previous document that analyzed the, the dam at Morris. I think it is, it is a possibility. Does it, it doesn't change, it doesn't necessarily change the issue that we've, we've addressed previous, which is if it doesn't rain, we can't fill, we can't fill the reservoirs, which is the situation we faced in 2014.
But I, maybe I, what I was asking was, not, not whether we build more dams or a bigger dam, as far as storage tanks, if we look at more storage.
Okay, that's what I, I think, yeah, I think it's needed for, for different reasons. And I think it's something that would be part of a separate discussion that we should, we could definitely, definitely cover. So I have some thoughts on that. Maybe this probably isn't the right time to share it, but we should, we should probably talk about it.
Okay, that, that was it. That, that was, I didn't want to get too far into the weeds. Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Strong?
Yeah, thank you. I, I do have a question. I'm not sure I can articulate it very well. But a negative, a mitigated negative declaration does count on certain mitigations being in place. And so part of the study does say, you know, that one of the, I think, one of the mitigations is that we're going to have these monitoring wells, and we're going to be, you know, checking on what happens when we begin using the groundwater source under whatever conditions. So it doesn't make sense to me that a, an operational use plan couldn't also be considered a part of our consideration in whether this is a mitigated negative declaration as opposed to go back and do a full environmental impact study. Because, because I do think that, you know, the availability of being able to draw on more water from the groundwater is potentially growth inducing, but not only for our valley, and not only for our city, but for other jurisdictions saying, oh, Willits has lots of water. Let's go buy some. So I feel like it is sort of an important factor to build that into what we're approving, as opposed to later on, we look at a project, and that's like the size of the pump, or the size of the pipe, or the capacity of the actual treatment or storage tank. But, but being able to control how much that water source is used seems to me is, could be part of the mitigation measures that we look at in improving an environmental impact report. And I guess where I'm going with that is, I don't think we need to go back to the drawing board and start from zero. I think we've got a tremendous amount of work that has been done, and it's, it's good work, and we've got a lot of good data, some of it really old, but, you know, we, and we're going to be continuing to get more. But I'm wondering if it's worth taking another month or so to, to add some conditions that go into what we consider a safe approval of this, you know, to give us security about how this future projects might be structured. how this future projects might be structured. I guess it's sort of a question for, yeah, for Mr. Ramos.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. And that's a good point. And I apologize in advance for getting into the Sequo weeds here. I did want to clarify. So because the initial study concluded that there would be no potential significant impacts to groundwater, there are no mitigation measures proposed as part of the document that involved monitoring. Sequo wouldn't require that, and it would be a little bit frankly odd from my perspective to have mitigation measures aimed at, and monitoring and addressing something that is not a significant impact. So the way we do that then is really in that second part of the equation I was mentioning earlier, where the city can create enforceable definite conditions on the project, and you can actually make some of that monitoring part of, part of these conditions of operation, if you'd like. They, again, they don't necessarily need to be part of your environmental document, but you can make them enforceable conditions as part of this use plan. So that, that could be something that, you know, you direct staff to include and consider as, as part of this plan if, if you decide to move forward with directing staff to create it. But, but again, monitoring is not part of the mitigation and monitoring plan as drafted right now because there is no significant impact to address to, to make less than significant.
Vice Mayor Connie?
So Mr. Ramos, if the council decides to accept and approve the IS and the negative deck, that doesn't necessarily mean we are approving the parameters of the project. It just is like step one. And then we can delineate very clearly what the parameters of the project are and exactly how it's monitored, when it's used, how much is used, what a true emergency looks like, what specific maintenance tasks can be addressed with groundwater. All of those things will be a separate part of this process. Is that correct?
Yes, I'd, I'd agree with that statement. So your ISMND, I think you've accurately said, it really sets forth the maximal parameters for your project. So, so long as whatever project you move forward with, with whatever conditions, has less environmental impacts as a result, essentially is within the ISMND, yes, you can move forward with approving an ISMND, but not actually approving the project until you have conditions that you feel are appropriate and are approved at some, some future meeting. Yes, I would agree.
So then ultimately, the real question before the council is, do we accept that groundwater is a path forward to be an emergency use for our city, a secondary source for our city? And, and that's really the question that's before us. Is that a fair assessment?
I, I do think that's, that's part of the policy question that is before the council is, is this a path forward? And should you, should you look at what conditions to place on its use in the future? I'd agree with that.
Okay. Any further technical questions from council? Any one minute responses or questions from the public?
Yes, I'd, I'd like to respond. Mayor Rodriguez?
Yeah, restate your name.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, if you could just restate your name since we can't speak.
Yeah, my name's Ellen Drell. I, I'd like to respond to a lot of things, but I, I'm, Mr. Ramos is basically saying that the project before you in this ISMMD is not the real project. It's a theoretical project. Of course, we've stated before that the project has no limitations on the amount of pumping. Therefore, we feel that the mitigated negative declaration and the environmental review is entirely inadequate because it doesn't really examine the potential impact of the maximum project. If these conditions are placed on the project and the project is clearly defined upfront, then we would agree that the MMD is acceptable. But I think it's also a violation of SEQA to put off mitigations to some future date. So if the council approves this not, this theoretical project, it's not, it doesn't really define the project that the city council wants to put in place, and then says that we will work on mitigations later, none of it makes very much sense. I think it's important that, that the project be clearly defined, and then you can determine what mitigations or, and/or conditions are necessary in order to make that project work, and so that doesn't have a potential negative impact on the environment. So I, I support council member's strong suggestion that the city take the time to put the conditions on the mitigations and clearly define the project, and then approve the ISMMD, and we're good to go. Then everybody knows what, what we're talking about here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Do we have any other members of the public? All right, I'm going to bring it back to council for conversation. Vice Mayor Connie?
Sabrina, I think John Almeida might have a question. There's a confusing comment in the chat from him. John, did you have something that you wanted to say?
Yeah, I was trying to get typed in and unmuted and everything was messing up. So anyway, John Almeida, I have a disagreement with Council Ramos on the fact that the study is the same, doesn't matter if the information was from 65 or 86. I don't disagree, I don't agree with that. That information's not valid for this time and point in this, in this world. In 100,000 years or a million years, we don't even agree on those time period. We have no history. So we do have history from the 1960s and 80s, and it's completely different from the history from 2000 till now. As far as the water goes, that they were talking about in the three-month period, we had that great big rain and looked like it might turn into something like the 1960s, and all of a sudden, now the water got shut off. So they got their recharge during that period of time for three months of use. So you have to take a broader time factor. But I'm okay with this project. My, my concern is about how it's used, especially seeing that the city doesn't seem to have control on how much they sell, like 11 million gallons this last year from the Parkwell. It really concerns me, concerns people in the valley, on, on more issues that I can elaborate when we come to the other meeting. So I'm for the project. I don't agree with all the information. Let's establish the, the rules for using this project so everybody can have water. Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Caller, go ahead. You have one minute?
Yes, this is Rosamund Crowder. And I'm also in favor of the project, but I would also like to see the limits written into the environmental document. I did find the 70 horsepower, that was in the previous initial study, and that was just taken out. So really, it, it says nothing about how big a pump could be used. It does say that the Elias Well could produce up to 800 gallons per minute. And unless it says what size pump, and I do understand that the limiting factor is the treatment, and so the treatment, there's no way to know what that could be. So it's quite possible that, you know, since that's not included in the environmental study, a very large treatment system could be created in the future and be able to process this 800 gallons a minute, which is a lot. So I am still concerned. And the monitoring, I don't know when or how 600 gallons a minute, 800 gallons a minute was tested, and what kind of, what the monitoring wells did then. I do know that since November, there are parts of Willets that have had very bad water. And so it's interesting to me that, that that's when the Elias Well began to be pumped. So those are my concerns, and I, I do encourage the city council to include in the environmental document some kind of threshold, when would, when, when monitoring wells drop to what level would pumping stop? So that's, that's what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I'll bring it back to council.
Gonzalez would like to move the resolution adopting the negative deck with the idea that the use guidelines be brought back online.
Councilmember Gonzalez, is the second part of your motion that an operational use permit would be put in place before the council to approve as a condition? Was that what you were stating?
Not so much, I think that permit's the right word, but the plan be brought back to us. I'm using the right terminology. Rod, is that the right terminology?
I believe so, but I would defer to Mr. Ramos on that one, actually. Yeah, I think operational use plan is, is the term that we've been using.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a motion before us. Madge, you have a second or a clarifying question?
A clarifying question about, are you moving the approval of the initial study and mitigated negative declaration conditional on this use plan that would come back later? Because I, I'm not sure that, that that's appropriate way.
Moving for the negative declaration, and, and that I would want to see the use plan come back to us.
Oh, okay. So you're saying that would be a second step later on, a conditional use plan, or a operational use plan, when we're looking at the whole project, but not part of the EIS or the SEQA review?
That's correct.
Okay. So I, I do not want to second that because I, I'm uncomfortable with that. Thank you. Can I make a statement or should I wait until this, if there's a second? Oops, you're muted, Sabrina.
Sorry. We have a motion on the floor, so let's go ahead and see if we have a second, and then we can have further discussion. Does anybody want to second this motion? Okay, I will second this motion myself, and then we'll have further discussion. Madge, feel free to speak up.
Okay. Yeah, I, I feel like what our council, Ramos, said is that the EIS document, or in this case, the initial study, negative, anyway, we know what we're talking about. The, the subject of this motion sets the maximum potential project. And I think it's been pointed out in some of the comments that we don't know what a future council might do. We don't know what the future weather is going to do. We don't know how much other pumping might be going on in the valley. You know, there's a lot of other things we don't know, but we certainly know what's under our control. And to me, to have a, a SEQA document that allows a maximum that I'm not necessarily comfortable with, and then we later condition a project on it being, you know, more something I am comfortable with, I just think that it should be in the SEQA review that we see some constraints on how much groundwater in the future might be drawn, and that, that be written into what we're approving as a SEQA document. Otherwise, I feel like it's not accumulated, it's not taking into account cumulative impact. You know, like this year, we approved the 40 gallon per minute pump, but two years from now, we approve a 70 gallon per minute, and two years from then, we do a bigger holding tank, or, you know, I mean, there's the future, that leaves an awful lot of things that I would not be comfortable approving. So I think it's our duty to not approve a SEQA, you know, green, green light to something that then could be potentially abused in the future. So I'm not comfortable with it. But I don't think it's a major fix required, and I think it could come back, you know, in, in as little as a month and have something that I am comfortable with. Because I, I'm comfortable with the project essentially, and I like the conditional, the operational use plan getting defined a little bit. So anyway, that's my comment.
Any other council members? Okay, I'll, I'll pipe in on this one. I've had a lot of questions. I received a lot of feedback from the community trying to understand it. I, I understand the concerns over the, the potential for, for overuse, but I don't see that the, the environmental documents really lead to that. It's really about, for me, the focus is on the operational use plan that we propose to have council come back and, and work on. And then also when I go back to the, the project itself, we're talking about replacing an existing pump and replacing an existing tank. So really, the changes are the 3,600 feet of water main that are really, that's really the essence of the, of the, of the operational plant. And we all agree that we need resiliency in our water system. So I believe that groundwater is important and it needs to be part of our plan. We need to have an operational plan that lays out, you know, step by step, when we reach this threshold in an emergency, then it constitutes this. And I see that being really the, the opportunity for the staff and the council to come together. This is our vision about where our values are in terms of like, what constitutes an emergency? Is an emergency a water issue within the Willet City Limits? Is an emergency a water issue within the County of Mendocino? So I see the operational use plan being more where we can lay that out. And I don't want to hold up the, the adoption of the environment documents. So I would be in support of this. Any other council members?
I would just say that I, I think those are all excellent points, Mayor. And while ultimately, I think this is an important direction for the council to go, to help build resiliency into the water supply for the Willets community, I, like Madge, would feel much more comfortable if the limits of the project were clearly spelled out and transparent for council and public alike before we gave a green light. I will not be able to say yes tonight without seeing the fully fleshed out operational use plan. I think it's a great start. I want it fully developed before I say yes.
This is Larry. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Larry.
I'm with Greta and Madge. I, I just can't buy it for this time. At this time, I think we ought to just go back and, and check and have more information. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, this is Gonzalez.
Go ahead.
Out of the conversation, I think I will pull my motion.
Thank you. City Manager Brian Bender, when we talked earlier, I asked you about how long it would take to put together this operational use plan, and I believe you told me some me somewhere between 30 to 60 days. I'm wondering what the ramifications would be if we put off the approval of the, the adoption of the environmental documents until we have this full plan in place?
Well, like I said, uh, during our conversation earlier today, that was an estimate. We, we had some further discussion with staff. We think we can, we understand what we're dealing with and what we need to compose. I think we can do this within 30 days. Um, one of the greatest concerns, and I'm not trying to put, um, you know, a trigger mechanism to this project, but, um, our ability to, if we do receive approval from the council subsequently, is to move ahead with construction phase, which is preparing the bid docs, um, working with contractors and, and having a construction season. So that's kind of, that, that deadline now, that timeframe is starting to appear on the horizon. We do have some, um, cushions that we can work with. Uh, I just want to be clear if, if the guidance that we receive from council tonight is to come back with the project as presented with an operations plan that is, um, composed and deals with the concerns that we have heard during the public comments tonight. Is that correct?
I think fair assumption. Do you agree, council?
I agree with that.
I guess I'm not, um, I'm not a hundred percent sure if it would require that a sentence or two get put into the actual Sequa documents. I would feel more comfortable if it was in there as part of the Sequa document as well as the action that we take. But, but yes, that's, that's my intent.
I, I understand that it's something that's out there as well and that's something we need to, I think, uh, you know, Mr. Ramos has commented on, you know, some, how we can apply that. Um, I don't think right now we're prepared to say yes and no. That is a straightforward, um, proposition, but we do hear the, the intent of the council and we will try to honor that to the best of our ability. And we'll have to have a kind of a group huddle here at the staff level to figure out what we need to do, um, in, in compliance with all state regulations on this, this matter and then bring back the item that you are requesting. So yes, I understand what you're saying. I just want to make sure there's a mechanical process to do that.
Okay. I thank you all for your input. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Um, I just wanted to, um, really strongly thank staff for the work that they did today to put together the language to start the operational use plan. I, I really feel like you listened to the individual council members who were listening to the public and your response gives me a lot of confidence that we are ultimately going to have a project that serves our community very well. And so I, I know that it's got to be frustrating for you to feel like this is, you know, gosh dang it, why don't they just say yes and let us move forward? But this is such an important topic. It's so emotionally charged. It's so essential for everyone in the community. And I really do thank you for your efforts today to make this a fully transparent, digestible project for everyone. So thank you.
Appreciate those comments. Like I said, we're here to move forward the best project with, that we can gain council support. That's what our job is.
Okay. I believe we've given direction and clear direction. Kathy, did you have a comment?
Yes, I have a motion and a second on the table. Are they willing to withdraw that?
Yes, uh, Councilmember Gonzalez withdrew his motion. Yes. And instead we give direction to bring this item back approximately 30 days when it's ready for, uh, for, for the reveal by the public and council. As though I will be closed.
Oh, I'm sorry. You, you were about to close the public hearing and I was going to remind you of that fact. Uh, I'm sorry for interrupting.
That's okay. And I'm going to close the public hearing, um, on this matter. All right. Enactment of ordinances, we have none this evening. We have a consent calendar. Uh, we have the council minutes from January 26th and then the resolution ratified, standing for an additional 30 days, approval of continual virtual city council commission committee meetings pursuant to AB 361.
I have a move approval of the consent calendar.
Gonzalez seconds.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Strong.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
We didn't ask for public, we didn't ask for public comment.
Uh, hold on Kathy. Were there any members of, thank you, Madge. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on the consent calendar? Okay, having heard done, roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Connie?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Um, commissions, agencies and, uh, or I'm sorry, monthly activity reports. We have a business license activity for January 2021 that's in the agenda packet. If you'd like to look that over. Uh, commissions, agencies and authorities, the city council has no business before us. Um, city manager reports and recommendations, and I'll turn that over to City Manager Brian Bender for his verbal report as well as the adoption before us of our resolution.
Yeah, it's kind of, uh, it's amusing. You, you know, you're asking for public comment. The gallery kind of left us. So, uh, um, okay. Uh, what we have for you tonight is a resolution declaring, the council declaring surplus vehicles. We have six in total and some pieces of equipment, uh, in there. Interestingly, we have, uh, three generators that are, um, vintage of late, uh, mid 60s to early 70s that really haven't had much use and I think they're being stripped for parts. Uh, this is an effort to, um, just kind of get our house in order. We have worked with Public Works, Kenan O'Shea has done a wonderful job in moving vehicles out of the Public Works yard. Now we moved on to the wastewater facility and Daniel Curtis has done a great job as well. Uh, the effort with the Public Works vehicles has accumulated approximately about $2,500 and just, it's not a lot of money, but you know, it, it helps and it also makes our facilities look a little bit more clean and efficient. Um, and it creates the right vibe for the organization. So that is what is before you tonight to consider and hopefully adopt.
Okay. Questions, comments or motions? Madge?
I'll move approval of the staff recommendation.
I'll second Gonzalez.
Okay. Anybody from the public like to comment? Roll call.
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Connie?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Verbal report, City Manager Brian Bender.
Uh, just two things. Um, I, I didn't know how far we can go with public comments regarding groundwater, so I didn't prepare a long list, long lengthy list of comments, but, um, we did have our, uh, biweekly update with Dr. Corin this morning, um, on behalf of the city managers in the county. And, um, the current order for indoor masking is, is prepared, is dated to end our cease on February 15th. Dr. Corin has communicated that he is going to continue that order, uh, in Mendocino County, uh, at least for several more weeks. He will revisit, uh, the need for that order, um, and potentially remove it by March 15th. His logic is, is that, uh, the current surge has placed a strain on health facilities and health, the health professionals. And he doesn't want, he wants to ride that out and make sure that the, uh, the health, uh, infrastructure in this community or this county, um, is well prepared, not only for dealing with COVID related, um, cases, but also a non-COVID related. So that was his point and he made that very clear, um, with the city managers. And then as, uh, the council was aware, I was out of the office last week attending the Cal League, um, city managers conference, uh, for several days down in Monterey. It was very informative, a lot of good networking opportunities. It, it, it's amazing. Uh, I, I, you know, throughout my career, I've usually represented smaller communities, more rural areas. And once again, it's always the have and have nots, um, in, in local government. You know, you have communities that, you know, really have issues that I can only dream of, um, and they make, uh, really big concerns about. And, you know, our, our smaller communities here in Mendocino County, we're, you know, we're a little bit closer to the concerns of the public and the council and, and just trying to provide good, efficient governance to the community. And that's what we, we strive ourselves on and, and don't get caught up too many in the, the grand poly, uh, poly, poly political science, uh, philosophical debates that our larger neighbors and metro communities have. So I think we do a good job. Um, we have good staff, we have good council and a good engaged community that we respond to. So I just wanted to say that. So thank you. And if you have any questions, um, I'm available.
Thank you. All right. Department recommendations. We have before us and a, to adopt a resolution accepting the construction completion of the Willis Airport runway rehabilitation project, project number 2020 dash 03, and authorizing the filing of the notice of completion. Our presenting staff member is Community Development Director Dusty Dooley.
Thank you, Mayor Rodriguez. Good evening, council members. Uh, yeah, I couldn't say it better myself. That's exactly what's in front of you. Uh, anxious to, to certainly get this, uh, project wrapped up. Uh, I think at this point the council is quite familiar with this construction project. It's been 99% complete for a number of months now. The, the delay, uh, was, uh, getting the FAA to complete a, uh, fly over the airport and check, uh, off on our new flight procedures, uh, that were developed, uh, based on the, the new thresholds established for our airport. Um, the FAA very much had redeeming qualities though, in that they paid for the entire project, which cost over a million dollars. So, uh, we passed our, our flight check and, um, are, we're ready to close out this project. So you have a resolution before you tonight with a recommendation from staff to adopt. And I will add that no groundwater resources are being used to support this project. Thank you.
All right. Any members of the public?
Dusty for being flippant there. We'll, we'll, we'll take care of that first thing in the morning.
I learned it. Nevermind.
Dusty, it's only 8:37. All right. Are there any members of the public that would like to address us on this matter? All right. I'll bring you back to council for questions, comments or entertain a motion. Councilmember Strong.
I move approval of the staff recommendation to declare the construction complete. Project completion.
Gonzalez would like to say.
All right. And acknowledging, uh, Councilmember Gonzalez with a second. Any further comments? Okay, call for the vote.
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Connie?
Yes, and hopefully the mayor will bring it in for a smooth landing.
Mayor Rodriguez. Oh boy. Uh, yes.
Thank you. And I'd also like to thank Dusty for, uh, all his hard work on this project. I know it wasn't easy. It's taken a while. Um, Meaden Hunt, FAA, Team Zalati, everybody works really well together to get this done. So thank you.
All right. Um, next order of business is the adopt the resolution accepting the construction completion of the California Penn Water Main Replacement Project, project number 2021 dash 01, and authorizing the filing of the notice of completion. Uh, the presenting staff member is project manager Jeremy Wonka.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, this is just the notice of completion for the California Penn, uh, Water Main Project. We talked about it a little bit, uh, at the last meeting. Um, it went well. We were able to replace about 700 feet of very leaky water pipe. Um, and council also approved overlaying the street when we were done, which was the only change order on the project. Um, it was a nice touch. I do have a, a correction to the staff report. The total amount of the project should be 325,030940. Uh, it's $54 off for some reason. I don't know how much it matters, but, uh, that's the actual total. Um, but yeah, uh, successful project. It was nice to get rid of that, uh, you know, bad section of pipe and we're, we're making good progress on getting rid of a lot of that old pipe. So we're, we're pretty happy with it. Um, unless you have any questions, that's about it.
Gonzalez. Uh, yeah, Jeremy, how are the residents? Did we get any, any feedback back from the residents in that area regarding water or disruptions? Make them happy?
I mean, the, the people on the street were some of the most accommodating, friendliest people on any streets I've, I have worked on, on any project. It, it was really extremely pleasant. Um, I, we may have had brown water calls when we did our tie-ins. It wouldn't surprise me. I, I don't remember for, for sure. Um, but that does happen. Um, you know, when you, when you tie in and you, you stir it up. Um, but in general, everybody seemed very happy. It was a very, uh, very pleasant, uh, couple of streets to work on.
Don't drive that street that often or those streets that often, but, uh, it looked good. So good work.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks.
A jump. Are there any members of the public that would like to address us on this item? All right. Bringing it back to council. Madge?
I'll move approval of the, uh, notice of completion on this great project. And with the change that as noted by, uh, Mr. Wonka.
All right. Accepting, um, Councilmember Strong's motion and, uh, Councilmember Gonzalez seconding the motion, correct? Okay. I saw hand up. All right. Any further questions or comments from council? All right. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Gonzalez? Stransky?
Yes.
Connie?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes. Okay. Motion carries. Um, moving on to department monthly reports, there are none presented in this packet. Uh, city council announcements, communications and reports. I'll start with our Vice Mayor Greta Connie.
Thank you. Sabrina, did you want to, um, share your comments about the finance committee meeting or would you like me to?
Feel free. Unless you've got a lot to discuss, I can always add.
Okay. Um, so, um, the mayor and I, uh, attended the finance committee meeting, um, just yesterday morning, um, with, um, City Manager Bender and Finance Director Orozco. Um, it was a, um, a good opportunity to meet Mr. Orozco and to hear his plans on how he is going to get our finance department, um, in order, our house in order. Um, sounds like the first, um, steps he's taking are to really work with the auditors to get our financials, um, completed for, uh, fiscal year 1920, uh, or, uh, and, and 2021 to get those audits done. Um, so, um, it was a, a good ground laying and, um, we'll start getting some more detailed information once he gets all the data entered in correctly. once he gets all the data entered in correctly, and, and can start giving us some recommendations and some mid-year budget adjustments. So, that's my report.
All right, thank you. I think also too, I'd just like to add that we spoke quite a bit about the need for staffing and the checks and balances in, in making sure that the financials were looked over by several eyes, and I really appreciated all of the structural information that he gave and laying out the vision of what the finance department would like to comprehensively accomplish there. It was a really well laid out plan. All right, let's see, how about Councilmember Stransky?
No, I have nothing, they put the meeting off for another couple of days for the water and wastewater, thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yeah, I, just want to add, I, LAFCO met on Monday, and I am now the city alternate, and we're in a arena show, so I actually had to go to work at that meeting, and the only issue, well, one of the issues there that came down was Service Area 3, which the county has as a special district, was considered inactive by the State Controller's Office, and they required action by LAFCO and the county reactivating. Apparently, the county is going to use that, it's, instead of it being like Brook Trails that has borders, it's going to be a district that is all over the county, they want to use it for, I think Brook Trails is interested in using part of it for some traffic and fire issues, and their, the thought is doing it also, I guess they're watching what they're doing in Brook Trails, Sherwood, I guess the Sherwood Corridor for fire, and that they're looking to do something similar in the east side of the fire. So, it was the county put money into an account, we basically ruled that it is an active special district again, and then we had an evaluation of the executive officer, that was down on that.
I have a question for Jerry, is that sort of like they've got a dummy agency that they're going to fill it in with something that is needed that isn't, doesn't exist yet, is that the idea?
Yes, the idea is that it's been batted around at the county level for a while, and the problem was, it was kind of like a district that had existed at some point for, I think for cemeteries or some, some, some other use, and it just was sitting out there with no funding, so the state basically said, you're an inactive district, you're not conducting any business, and they were moving to basically go away, and LAFCO's job was to basically make it go away or resurrect it, county made an effort to resurrect it, and now the idea is that they could use things in the county.
Resurrected as a completely different agency than what it was originally.
I guess they, they bred life into it, I guess, is the way, or breathed life in so it could be used for things, but I think the initial thing is going to be, it's happening up here, but I think at one point, they were batting around different ideas like ambulance district or something like that, but at this point, it looks like it's going to be used for fire, and maybe some road, road improvements.
All right, thank you, councilman.
Was, was that for me? You, you're, there was a little blip in the sound there. Okay, I have three agencies to report on briefly here. Last week, on Thursday, the Sonoma Clean Power Board met, and I am the alternate from the Mendocino County Cities, but I was not informed that the, that the main designee wasn't going to be there, but I attended anyway, and I just, but I was an observer. The kind of interesting things that came up at Sonoma Clean Power, one of them is that gas prices are going way higher, and as a result of that, in a way that I don't understand, electricity prices are going to go down, so that will actually be a help to Sonoma Clean Power, and to residents who are more reliant on electricity than on natural gas. They also reported that a judge in a case that has been going back and forth with PG&E and various groups like Sonoma Clean Power, the, they call them aggregate, community aggregate providers, anyway, the judge is telling PG&E that they have to divulge all of the data on how they calculate what they charge the community choice aggregates like Sonoma Clean Power. So, Sonoma Clean Power was very pleased that the judge is basically forcing Sonoma Clean, forcing PG&E to be transparent. Another issue that some people might know about is the, the, what is this called? The CPUC, the Public Utility Commission of the state, has been looking at a change in how they allow billing for rooftop solar customers, and there was a proposal that was originally scheduled to take place last week, and it has been deferred, there's been a big bruhah about it because not only the residents who have rooftop solar, but also the industry, the solar industry is saying, you're killing, you're going to kill it by raising the rates, regardless of how much electricity you actually use, it would raise the rates on the rooftop solar folks dramatically. That got deferred action, and it sounds like they're politicians, they're trying to work out something where it isn't so draconian, and where solar doesn't get their ox gored so badly. So that was Sonoma Clean Power, quick report. Tomorrow is EDFC, the Economic Development Financing Corporation, that's at 2 o'clock tomorrow, and it'll be, there will be at least a couple of additional loans, and I'm not sure yet what they are, I haven't studied the packet yet, but that'll be a good meeting. And then the following Thursday, February 17th, at 10:00 in the morning, will be the Mendocino Solid Waste Management Authority meeting, and we've been, you know, working with a lot of, there's been a raise for our staff people that have been really, you know, kind of undervalued and not competitive with places they could go, but they've been very loyal to the solid waste management, and so we're giving them a raise, and we are advertising for a permanent general manager, right now we have a interim part-time general manager, and otherwise, things are going well there.
All right, thank you. I, aside from the finance committee, have not met with any of the other boards or committees that I am on, although I want to acknowledge that this council, in addition to the boards, commissions, and committees that we all serve on, we all participate in many of the other community meetings that are happening in the community, whether with our, you know, assembly member, Congress, or there are lots of other things that we get invited to, and I just want to acknowledge the hard work that we do there, and thank everyone for participating in those from time to time. Do we have any good and welfare? We had E. Checurelli's birthday, which was very well-attended, probably the best parade I've seen, so that was good, any other good and welfare?
I believe there's still, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I'm, I'm sorry, I saw Madge's hand drop, but Sober Grad is doing their full port thing, I believe, this weekend, the Super Bowl weekend, so I think they're still selling tickets if we are, get them at Scoops, I think is one place you can get them, so, just throw that out there, it's good and welfare. That's all I got.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to mention that last Thursday, also in the evening, our supervisor, John Hascheck, well, we hosted a, a town hall with him, and there were about two dozen people there, and it was a very lively discussion on quite a few subjects, with a lot of give and take, a lot of comments from the people that attended, so I really appreciate that John Hascheck has made himself so available and responsive to his constituents, and it was a, this was a meeting hosted by Willett's Economic Localization, well, thank you.
All right, thank you, that brings us to closed session, so pursuant to Government Code 54957, Public Employee Annual Performance Evaluation, we will be meeting in closed session with our city manager to discuss the annual evaluation. If we have anything to report, we'll report back in public, and let's see, it is 8:54, let's reconvene in closed session in six minutes at 9:00, is that sufficient? Okay, then 9:00, I'll see you all then, thank you.